Good evening and welcome to our Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. May we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Good evening, School Board, and good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening, Ms. Wade. Tonight is a very special night, as you know so well, and I'm not going to talk much about it because we've known each other for a long time, and certainly you have served this board in the school district well and children well. And so tonight, we would like to honor you, and at this time, I'd like for Mayor of Murfreesboro, Tommy Ragg, to please come up.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. If appropriate, I'd like to ask Madam Chair to come down here, please. And I know she has a number of family members with her today, including her handsome husband, Goldie Wade. And so I'd like to ask Goldie to join me up here on the, at the podium, and then the other family members who are here, too, if you would come on up, because this is kind of a, not only a citywide celebration, but a family celebration. Need to get all the important people up here. And we have Vice Mayor Washington with us today, as always, an excellent steward of our school board and for our city council, and also Madeline Harris is here. Madeline, we're glad you're here to be with us. And Mary, would you introduce your family members who are here?
I sure will. This is my husband, Goldie Wade, to my left, my youngest sister, Wilma Hardison, her daughter, Nia Hardison, my brother Quincy McKnight, and my sister Sandra Kenton.
All right, just give them a round. When Mary was born, no, we're not going to, but she began her journey with Murfreesboro City Schools helping with Classroom on Wheels. She has served on this board since 1998 and is currently serving her fourth four-year term. In the 16 years of being an instrumental part of the board as an elected official, she has served as board chair since 2009, and during her tenure on the board, she welcomed Irma Siegel School, John Pittard School, Scales Elementary, Discovery Reeves Rogers, and soon, overall Creek Schools into the district. Her commitment to continuous personal learning and growth is evidenced by her active work with the Tennessee School Boards Association, in which she earned Level V boardsmanship, the highest possible level of attainment, and was selected for the All Tennessee State School Board. And under her leadership, our city schools have established a comprehensive approach to address the needs of the whole child, as evidenced by the establishment of the Mobile Health Unit, Franklin Heights Family Learning and Resource Center, and other outreach projects. She has served over the years with community organizations like Reed to Succeed, our Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, our Business Education Partnership, the Rutherford Rehabilitation Board, and MTSU's Community Advisory Board. There are so many things that I could say about Mary Wade, but I am, in the interest of time, just going to say, thank you. She has been a tremendous asset, resource across the community. She taught my wife at State Farm for many years of how to be a good person at State Farm, and so Jeannie and I both thank you. And it is my pleasure now, therefore, on behalf of our city and on behalf of our entire city council, and hereby proclaim today, April 22nd, as a day to honor and recognize the accomplishments of Madam Chair, Mary Wade, and ask all of our citizens to join in this well-deserved recognition. Mary, congratulations. And thank you all, please, for joining us.
I'm going to keep this short, so I don't begin to get a whine started. I am very thankful for the time I've had to spend with Murfreesboro City Schools. It's been a joy and a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working under two directors. I don't know what I would have done without either one of the two. Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for tolerating me. Most times when I call with my thoughts, thank you. To this board, you've been nothing but wonderful. And if I don't stop now and say a great big thank you, I'll have to ask Board Member Renee for tissue. So I won't, but I'm thankful for my family who came to be with me. We're all criers, so I know to stop, so they don't start. And thank you again for allowing me, and thank you to the voters of Murfreesboro for allowing me to just be a part of this wonderful school system. Thank you.
And before I give up this podium for the last time as your mayor, before the school board, I want to thank each and every one of you for the diligence, the stewardship, and the faithfulness that you have provided to our students, to our parents, to our teachers, to our administrators across our system. We have a very special system in Murfreesboro, and that very special system makes Murfreesboro very special. So I want to thank each and every one of you, as mayor, for the work that you do, for the time, for the honored tradition of serving on this school board and being the very best that you can be. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to call Ms. Roseanne Barton to the podium, please.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm representing the principals and the administration of the Murfreesboro City Schools. Mary, you've watched us grow as a district. You've led us through building new schools, including mine, rezoning more than once, new administrators, and new attitudes. You've seen new directives come from the Education Commissioner, new ideas from teachers, students, other board members, and each time, you've cast your vote in the best interest of students and Murfreesboro City School employees. Not only have you served as a board member and a board chair, you've also represented our system through serving with community organizations like Reed to Succeed, the Chamber Business Education Partnership, Youth Leadership Rutherford, and of course, many more. You believed in PLCs. You supported us hiring people outside of the traditional classroom teacher to help take care of our students, like social workers and interventionists. You've always been open to new ideas and not afraid to take a stand to benefit our children, our families, and our future. Mary, I've known you a long time, and I cannot tell you, I told you out there, it's going to be a different board without you. I cannot thank you enough for all that you've done for us and for our students. You are a role model, and your leadership will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, also, the flowers and the vase are from the principals, and so we had it engraved in, just a little memento, so that when you put flowers in that vase every spring, you can remember that you're not at a school board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Jay Priestley, if you would come forward, please.
I'm Jay Priestley from Scales Elementary, and I'm here on behalf of the teachers of this, of this, this school system, and there's somewhere between two and two million of us. I'm not exactly sure of the number, but, but you have touched us all in, in one way or another. Mary, I have had the privilege of sitting with you back when I was an EA in our school system, and, and watching Ms. Katrine Stevens embarrass you royally on our morning announcement show, and Mr. Marsh treating you royally on our morning announcement show, and, and of course, with Ms., with Ms. Johnson as well. And it's been a pleasure to see you on our campus, and, and I've, I've crossed paths with you at field trips, and at my daughter's school, over at Discovery School, and it's just been a pleasure to watch you at work in our system, as is the same with the rest of our board as well. It's so good to see you all out and in the school system. But Ms. Mary, you have, you have led that, you have led that way for the, for our board members here, and I really appreciate it. You know, it's, it's been interesting to see, over the years, how you've always led by example. And of course, us as teachers, that is so much of what we are trying to accomplish, and, and getting our kids not just to learn their, their facts and learn their, their those standards, but more than, more than anything, to become good, solid citizens. And, and Ms. Wade, it has been such a privilege to have people like you leading the way for us and demonstrating for us what we need to be as, as members of this community. And I've been given so many, so many, you know, today I was out talking to, to a few of the faculty down the hall from me about what I was going to be doing this afternoon, and, and I was just asking them for advice and just things, and, and it was amazing to me to see how many of the stories just came back to, to you being there for us, and, and as Ms. Roseanne said, you, you know, you always having the children at, at heart, and not just, not just budgets and, and not just, you know, the administrative side of things, but, but the important things, the children. And I want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And last, Mary, we'll call forward the person who represents the most important people in the school district. So I'd like, please, for Kishon Holmes, if you would come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Kishon Holmes, and I'm a sixth grader, I'm a sixth grade leader at Mitchell-Nelson Schools. On behalf of the students of Murfreesboro City Schools, past and present, I thank you for your leadership. From the soaring eagles of Mitchell-Nelson, to the roaring lions of Pittard, to the rockets of Hobgood, and all the Murfreesboro City Schools in between, thank you for attending our school performances, art shows, ballgames, career days, Special Olympics, reading in the school days, open houses, and many, many more activities. Did you know that many of the students who were in kindergarten when you became a board member are now college graduates?
I'm not old.
That's a lot of performance over the years. The students of Murfreesboro have changed over the years, and so have our needs. Thank you for supporting the new technology in our schools, like the Student Center programs, like Breakfast in the Classrooms, and my favorite, the Leader in Me Initiative. Most importantly, thank you for supporting recess and field trips. Thank you, and best wishes for a happy retirement.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you go out the way. Everybody has acknowledged, and now it's the board's turn, so listen carefully.
I will.
Roses are red, violets are blue. Look out, Mary, this is for you. Long, long ago, in the younger years, seeing underprivileged children brought about many tears. You had a passion, as we all know, to help all children, no matter how slow. So when the time came, in 1968, to serve on the school board, you could hardly wait. You were elected, and to serve you have done, making a name for yourself only second to none. You have taken to heart a most meaningful task and responded to questions that anyone could ask. A leader you are, and it is true, there is no other just like you. You have been a mentor and a guiding light for many of us every meeting night. For 16 years, we have leaned on you and respected the opinion, the opinion that came from you. We applaud you for the time you have spent in making our school system the best one yet. We wish you the best in whatever you do, and we always will remember the fantastic you.
Well, what a send-off. Thank you.
We're, we're not done.
Oh, Lord. Am I going to need more tissue?
I have more. You go ahead. We're going to do it now or later? I'll just assume, do mine now.
Okay. No, go right ahead.
Maybe I better wait till later. Somebody else have anything they want to say? Later, let's do it. No, 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 I'm going to get done, I'm going to get done.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I am going to do this, I may tear up, and y'all just have to please bear with me, because, um, Mary was my first friend on this board. I don't mean a colleague, I mean a real friend, and that means a great deal to me. She has model kindness, integrity, passion, and heart. She has been a voice for those in our school system whose voices were silent, who did not or could not advocate for themselves. She has been that voice. She has taught us, guided us, and empowered us on the board. She gave us a voice, too. When we had questions or we wondered, she would say, "You've got a right to ask." And we needed to hear that. And she was the queen of the one-liners. She is, she is the queen of the one-liner. If you're worried about something, she'll say, "Honey, don't pick up that baggage." And I always liked that, and I use that on my kids now, when they start wanting to, to pick up things that, you know, they don't need to carry. If she, you know, didn't, if, if there was somebody who was a little bit different or something, my favorite line is, she would say, "That's, that person was more than a And I loved that description, because it's neither a nay or yay, it's just that person was more than a notion. Mary has meant a lot to the school system that goes without saying, and there's no way we can give what she has meant words. And like the mayor, all I can say is thank you, because Mary has shown us that people are people, and we are all God's children, and I thank her for that.
I'd like to say something. I've not known Ms. Wade as long as the other members of the board, but she is such an outstanding role model. She, several of us are newer on the board, and she has embraced us and been such a wonderful role model, so that we put children first in every thought process that we have. It's all because of our leadership, and, and she values the opinions that we all have and has encouraged us to talk about what's on our mind. And, and she, she says, "You are elected officials. People want to know what's behind your thoughts." And you've encouraged us, and you've encouraged us to, to make our decisions because of the life experiences that we've had. And as a mother, she's been very encouraging to me in prioritizing, but yet, yes, we are here as school board members, but we also have outside lives, and she's been very nice and accepting that sometimes I might need to be there other than, than elsewhere, and I really do appreciate that. But it's hard to find really good role models, and I think that our chairperson has just been that, a perfect role model. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to defer to the end of the meeting.
I'll say something.
Okay, Mr. Barrett.
I'll keep it short, because she gave me that advice a long time ago, too. She said, "Always keep it short when you're before people." So thank you for your mentorship, and just thank you for your friendship, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, we're here for business, and I certainly am appreciative of all the kind words that this boy has had to say. You don't know how much you've helped me. I've had to call on you at different times for different reasons, and I'm appreciative. Ms. Baker, you kept me out of trouble, and I appreciate it. Ms. Baker has the eye that when we grow up, you know, your parents will give you that eye when I look over there. Ms. Baker gives the friendly eye. I know when you're getting close to the line, step over, step back, step back, and I appreciate that, Ms. Baker. I really do. And I'm, you know I'm going to miss you, I've told you that I'm going to miss you. Well, now, board, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second, all in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, Dr. Gilbert, we're going to leave it at that smile between us. Communications.
We would like to extend appreciation to the employees of the Heritage Farms Dairy for conducting a group drive for the Franklin Heights Family Learning and Resource Center. And also, we've had several teachers who have been selected by the state as Common Core coaches. You'll remember that we have been going through this for the last couple of years, and so this year, again, these folks will go through quite a few weeks of training, and then they will train others. So at this time, we have had selected Laura Taylor, Sarah Catalano, Mary Allison, and Meredith Davis, so we congratulate them for that. Also, we have recently had our city hall art show, and we want to congratulate the winners there, and I will be getting you a list, and we will be congratulating them on camera at the next meeting. Chick Nitter, who is a Hobgood teacher, arranged for the NASA FMA Live event to come to Patterson Park for our schools. It was a phenomenal event. He really was the driving force behind that, and I really appreciated his leadership. The FMA Live is a NASA program that focuses on force, motion, and acceleration, the Newton's three laws, and is a very interactive, almost a Broadway show, television program kind of event that, where the children really do learn. We could not do that without the partnership of Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation, because there has to be a large venue where the truck can pull up and unload, and so Patterson Park has provided that now this year, and also when it was here three years ago. We want to thank Fifth Third Bank for sponsoring our job fair. It was a very successful job fair, and we appreciate all those teachers and principals and administrators and staff who helped with that. And I'd like to remind our folks, our audience, we certainly are aware of this, but to remind them that we do have TCAP testing. It will take place this year, we'll be doing it Tuesday through Friday. This is a shift that the principals and teachers had requested. We had been doing it on Tuesday, on Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, but the feeling was that, that the children, a lot of times, on Monday are tired, and so we will be having that Tuesday through Friday, the 29th of April through the 2nd of May. And finally, I'd like to ask Ava Jordan to please come to the podium. I want to recognize her. Ava is our transportation supervisor, and we received a call, I guess it's been a week ago, maybe a little over a week ago, that she was being honored, and she was being honored by the Tennessee Employee Support and Guard Reserve. She received the patriotic award, and I hope you brought it. There it is. And she was actually nominated by one of her, one of our employees because of her receptiveness to our, our folks going for their guard duty and their reserve duty. So I want to publicly thank Ava for recognizing what our troops do and for honoring that by your working with them so readily when they do need to, to go on those tracks of learning. And thank you so much, and congratulations on your award. Very much.
Thank you. It's been a very honor to accept this award, something that I've never expected, and I have military family, so this is something that I would accept for them, too, also. And I also feel that in our system as students, that we are encouraging them to go into the military. This is something that I feel is very important, and I think that our system supports that 100%. And someday, we'll have children that we now have in our system that will be giving their lives for us. So that's very important also.
Well, congratulations, Ava. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know how appropriate this is, but I want to do it anyway. I'd like to congratulate Collier Smith and also Nancy Renee for their reelection, and we will also welcome onboard soon, Mr. Phil King. So congratulations to you two for, for being here. Those are our communications.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Consent items, is there a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of eye?
Aye.
Action items, Ms. Baker?
Okay, the first policy that you have before you tonight on first reading is Board Policy PER 2, entitled Unemployment Compensation. This policy is already on the books, and this is just before you for review tonight. And I've made no changes to this policy. It merely states that the Murfreesboro City School Board is self-insured for claims for unemployment compensation.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second, all in favor, sign of eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is for first reading is Board Policy STU 1, regarding emergency closings. Again, this is a policy that is already on the books, is the revisions that have been made to this policy were to include in lines 17 through 21, some new forms of getting out the message when schools are going to be closed. We updated that the city of Murfreesboro Communication Department, rather than just the city TV, but the entire communication department, will be informed, because they have numerous methods that they get our message out, through the city TV, through their face, their Facebook pages, through the city's webpage, through the city's Twitter account. And then we also included that emergency closing information would be put out through the Murfreesboro City Schools website and Twitter account, and through phone notifications to the parents and guardians of our students.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second, all in favor, sign of eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight, first reading, is Board Policy STU 2, regarding the school year and school calendar. The only addition that has been made to this policy that is already in existence is in line one, the word, words of instruction have been added after the 180 days. So it, it now reads that by law, a standard school year for students shall consist of a minimum of 180 days of instruction.
Any questions, Mr. Campbell?
Go back over that again.
Before, it just said 180 days was the, the, the school year would consist of 180 days, and the state law actually uses the language of classroom instruction, and the board had requested that I, I make it say of instruction rather than classroom instruction.
I thought when you said it a minute ago, I thought you left out classroom, that's what I was asking about.
Ms. Smith?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
Classroom instruction does not necessarily have to be inside four walls.
Right, that's why I removed the word classroom.
Okay, if there are.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
That's why you removed the word classroom?
Yes, I did. The version you have before you tonight should not have the word classroom in it.
Mine doesn't.
Did not have.
Well, this is not.
Read, read, please, the first sentence.
First time we looked at, we removed that.
Mine says 180 days of classroom instruction.
That, that's the version that was presented at the last board meeting.
Well, I didn't get an update on the website, then, because mine says 180 days of classroom instruction.
The version I printed out today from the website does have the change in it.
Okay. Ours is correct. It depends maybe what time you looked at it, because it was posted earlier today.
I just now pulled it up.
Oh, okay.
Is that, could that be in the minutes, maybe?
Well, that, I mean, that's okay, but, all right. So you took out classroom?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Set, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All righty. Any more questions? And hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second, all in favor, sign of eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight on first reading is Board Policy STU 6, regarding the school day. There have been no changes made to this policy. It is as the current policy that you have on the books. It's merely for review.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker?
I think we skipped one.
Did we skip six, five, rather?
STU 5, it was under the consent agenda items, because you approved it on first reading at the last meeting.
Okay. Would you please read sentences three and four of STU 6, so I'll make sure what I've got, what you're saying?
The Murfreesboro City School System elects to extend the school day to at least seven hours for grades one through- hours for grades 1 through 6 for the purpose of meeting state instructional time requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Rainier?
I have a question about this. And it may be fine the way it is, but because it says at least seven hours of instruction, and it says at least, teachers will spend at least seven and one-half hours per day Would this be opening us up to an extended day, the way this policy is written, longer than what we are doing now?
It gives us flexibility to go beyond seven hours if we want. It's just, at a minimum, we'll have seven hours. It doesn't mandate that we go beyond seven.
Right.
Can that take care of your question, Mrs. Rainier?
Yes.
Okay. You have another question for Ms. Baker?
I'm just thinking. I'm just wondering if we could eliminate the words "at least," because if we ever decided to go ahead and make our school day longer, we could change the policy, correct? Or does this come directly from TCA?
This is based on some state regulations. I'm not sure if that language is the exact language in the state regulation.
Well, I know it's based on state regulations, but I just don't want someone, and this probably has been the exact same way the whole time, I just don't want someone to look at this, perhaps a teacher or an administrator, and suddenly think, oh, are they leaving it open to go eight hours, nine hours a day? And it could be nothing. It could just be something that's hit me.
Ms. Baker will look into that for you. Mrs. Rainier?
Well, I mean, whatever the board wishes is fine, but...
I don't personally have an issue with the reading, but if you want her to look it up for you to see if there should be a change, you do that.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay.
Well, so, if we're talking about the school day being seven hours a day, we should just take out "at least." I mean, can...
It just gives you flexibility if there is a need to go longer than seven hours a day for some reason.
In the event that we had...
Extreme weather.
Extreme weather. Make up time. Because at one point in time, many, many years ago, we did that, didn't we? I think we did an additional 30 minutes per day or...
If you've run out of snow days, you may have to do that.
Okay. It's fine.
If there are no more questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next policy before you on first reading is Board Policy STU8 regarding admission of suspended or expelled students. This policy is currently on the books. It is based on a state law that says a school system is not obligated to admit a child that has been suspended or expelled from another school system and can deny enrollment to that child if they are currently under suspension or expulsion from another school system. There's just been a very minor change to the policy in lines 1 and 3 where the word "student" was included.
Are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next policy you have before you tonight on first reading is Board Policy STU12 regarding student accident reports. This is a current policy. The revision that has been made to this policy, you will find in lines 5 and 6 where it is added that a copy of an accident report will be forwarded to the City of Murfreesboro's risk manager, because all of our general liability issues are handled through the city's risk management department, so that those accident reports will be forwarded to the city's risk manager.
Mr. Barrett?
Line 5, after occurs, I think we need a period, right?
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker? This policy? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The last policy you have before you tonight on first reading is Board Policy STU15 regarding student records inspection and correction procedure. This policy is based strictly on the federal law regarding educational records. Under that law, it has a requirement that parents can inspect their child's records, request copies of their child's records, and request that corrections be made to their records. The federal law also sets out a very specific procedure that must be followed if the parent in school system disagree relative to the correction. There is a hearing procedure that must be followed that I have now included in the policy that we have on our books. And that hearing procedure, you'll notice, starts on line 48, and it is that a hearing may be requested only on the grounds that the information contained in the educational record is inaccurate, misleading, or in violation of the privacy rights of the student. And then, the parent would request a hearing to determine if the record should be changed, and there, as the board had requested, a panel of at least three Murfreesboro City School administrative staff members will serve on that hearing. The staff members cannot be connected to that student, so it wouldn't be the principal or a teacher at that student's school. They would be from a different school. And then, after the hearing, if it is still determined that the record would not be changed, a note would be put in the record that the parent had requested the change, however the hearing panel had denied the change, but it would be noted in their record. And all of these procedures are set forth in the federal law relative to student educational records.
Mr. Barrett?
Line 34, do we need to spell out FERPA? I didn't see it anywhere else in there.
Okay.
And then, also, I know it's obvious to all of us since we are part of it, but MCS, can we just put it after Murfreesboro City Schools at some point, parentheses? Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Baker? Anything else you need about this policy? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Issues, reports, and information. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes. Mr. Barrett had requested to be on the agenda for the NSBA convention, and I think that's something the board has made a practice of doing, which I think is excellent, to share the information.
All righty.
All right. Let's see if we can get this to work. A little different being on this side. All right. Let's move on. Hmm. Why is this not going? Here he comes. It's not up there. Uh-oh. Well, oh, there we go. Awesome. All right. So, I had the opportunity to go down to New Orleans for the National, I spelled convention wrong, of course, Convention, National School Board Association for the conference down there in New Orleans, and I learned quite a bit. First thing I heard was this quote, "Always be beta, and when you think you're finished, you are finished." And that was an excerpt from Thomas Friedman. He's a columnist with the New York Times, and I just thought that really sums up where our district is right now. We're always trying to improve, always trying to strive, so I just thought that was really cool, you know, just always be in beta. So, always be testing. The first presentation I went and saw was called Effective Strategies for Working With Our State Legislators. You know, given the past legislative session and how we think they weren't listening to us, I thought this was a great one to go to, and it was a presentation from a school district in Pennsylvania. And here are some of the key takeaways from this presentation. They had a thing called an Educational Advisory Council, and this would include board members from, in our case, one from Rutherford County, one from Murfreesboro, both superintendents, members of our General Assembly, and they would get together to talk about educational issues and legislative agenda. And it would be an ad hoc committee, so they'd meet as needed, so they probably would meet more during the legislative session and not so much during the summer. And I also thought while I was hearing this presentation that we could also include someone from county commission and city council, because they are our funding bodies, so it wouldn't be a bad idea. Another thing they mentioned was just have our legislators visit the schools. I know they always say they do, but it would be a good idea to make sure our superintendents are with them, one of our school board members are there with them when they do come to visit, so they can ask us questions about what we need or what we see as something that we need. Also, local Chamber of Commerce is an advocate. I think they do a really good job already, but that was just something they mentioned. Need to talk to other stakeholders in the community and get them on board, you know, like local businesses. And I know Dr. Gilbert does a good job of that and some of our other board members, but that's also a good way to do that. Educate groups outside of education, just help them understand, you know, how education has changed. It's changed a lot, you know, in the last, even the last five, 10 years, and I think a lot of people sometimes don't understand that, so we just need to do a better job of getting out into the community. On their website, and they showed an example, I'm going to show you an example here in a minute, they actually put the budget and legislative information with contact info for the legislators, and I thought that was actually a good idea. They also put legislative news, updates every week about what's going on, and it's just informational, there's no editorial comments. Here's an example, I know you can't see it, but to the right is the legislative agenda every week. I know we all get some of those from TSBA, and I know Dr. Gilbert gets those from the Superintendent Association, but it'd be good for the public to be able to see some of those things too. And it's just informational, there's no editorial comment, it's just there for people. If they feel one way or the other, they can, you know, they can contact their legislator. And then, a most effective way to reach out to our legislators, you know, sometimes we don't know what to, you know, maybe we don't know what to do, but personal visits are always the most important, that's the most impact. Phone calls, the second most. Letter or personal email is fine, and the last one is the most ineffective, and I've seen that, they even said this, they ignore them or they throw them out, but is a form letter or, in our case, is a form email, they just ignore them. They get so many of those, it's just, it's not effective. So, and they said be proactive rather than reactive on problems. You know, we're always on the receiving end of sometimes of some of these problems, but they said sometimes it's always good for us to go to them if we can find problems to go to them and actually identify those things. And then, school code. They said, this was in Pennsylvania, they said theirs was outdated. Change or update the code. You know, a lot of times, this stuff's been from the '30s, '20s, '40s, and it just really has never changed at all. And they're actually in the process of going through theirs, and that made me think that maybe in Tennessee, that probably needs to happen as well. It allows you to innovate, you know, maybe change some things. Next thing I saw was listen to employees and learn measuring satisfaction, engagement. After the conversation we had as a board about doing a survey of our teachers or just of the district, I thought this was a good one to go to, so I did. And here's some of the key takeaways. This was a presentation from Pawnee Schools in Wisconsin for their new hired teachers. They do lunch with the board. I thought that was a good, I thought, it was just real simple. Bus tour of the community, they get all their new teachers together, and they go on a bus tour of the community, gives them a sense of how big the community is, you know, what Murfreesboro has to offer, in this case, Pawnee. But they do a video introduction to all the staff. They offer Spiritware coupons for all their new schools, so if a new teacher shows up and they want to get a new shirt or a new cap or something with the school logo, they give them a coupon for that. So, then they have Spiritware for them to wear. And then, they also have this thing, a four-day orientation period, which includes time with the mentor, set up their classroom, personal time with the vice principal and principal. And I know this is pretty small to read, and, but they assign these mentors, and this was something that just struck me, and so they had this mentor program, and they assigned mentors to all the teachers that are new to the district, even veterans that come from different districts, and they keep them for three years. And then, these mentors are paired up with great, they try to get them as grade level as appropriate, sometimes they can't, obviously, but, and then, the mentors provide info to new hires as well as make them feel part of the community, because then they can ask questions about what's going on or who to talk to. And these mentors, in their district, they actually paid these mentors, like a stipend $500 or something like that, so just to reimburse them for their time. The mentors were formally trained, and they have defined expectations. The mentor has a list of expectations when meeting mentoring new teachers, so then they can just bounce ideas back and forth. And I know we do a lot of that already, but, and then, one question I had while listening to this is, do we have a consistent hiring process across the district? And that just popped in my head. And then, new hire check-in interviews, so after 30, 45 days, they find out how things are going with the new teacher just checking in, see how they're doing, see how they're faring. And then, this was a good one, I thought this was another good, oh, go back. They have this thing called, they recognize and reward accomplishments or highlights, and we do that here, I know that we do, but this would include board involvement, but they had this thing called spotlights on learning, where they bring in students, they bring in administrators, teachers, and they actually demonstrate some of the things they're learning in their classroom, or like, maybe the student's learning something, they'll come and show us what they're learning, or the teachers, how they're teaching something, they'll come to us and show us how they're doing that, or the administrator is working with teachers, and they'll come and explain or show us how that is in practice. And I just thought that was a good, because sometimes we hear these things from Dr. Gilbert for some of our administrators, but we actually don't see it, so it'd be great for them to come and demonstrate that for us, so that was a good idea. And this, like, I just brings me to my next point. This allows the board to receive info on projects and highlights on initiatives that are occurring throughout the district, and that's pretty much what I just said. So, then afterwards, they present the teacher with a star, and the students receive a pen that's for a thank you, and then, the board writes handwritten notes to the people that came and presented. It was just a way to thank them for their time and for coming and presenting. And then, a survey of the district, this was the last thing that they had. They do it in the middle of the year. For them, it was April, but maybe for us, for March, I guess, but they asked these questions every year for the past six years, and these were the two questions they asked consistently. They said, "Has district leadership?" One, "Made a positive change for the district?" And two, "Promoted leadership?" And of course, when I was looking at that, you don't have to ask those questions, we could come up with other, or administration or whoever can come up with different questions to ask, but as long as we're consistent about asking the same questions everywhere to see where we're at, you know, where the gauge, to actually gauge where they're coming from. So, I asked the presenters, "How often?" Or, "Is it done anonymously?" And they said, "Of course, it's done anonymously." And they use Survey Monkey, and it's once a year, so. Now, this was the one that really got me going. I really liked this idea. It's called Building a Nucleus of District Ambassadors, and this was a presentation I saw from a school district in Texas. And basically, it's an academy, it's similar to the Citizens Academy that Murfreesboro does, it's similar to Fire Academy, the Police Academy, but this would be for the schools. And what, you know, these are some of the questions I'm going to answer during this. It's, "What is the purpose of the academy? Why is the academy important? Why would MCS start this academy and continue it? And then, what are the expectations of the participants who take part in this?" So, the purpose of the academy, it's a systematic way to increase our potential to have ambassadors in a community. I know we've always talked about getting our voice out there, getting people out in the community, talking about our schools and what we're doing. So, and this would include community leaders, parents, city employees, city residents, teachers, elected officials, you know, whoever we can think of that would be a good advocate for our schools. And this is a rundown of what I'm going to talk about, like, of what the program looks like, components of the program. So, there's an application selection, there will be an application to fill out, program composition, like what it's about, my finger's a little happy there, board participation, schedule, the materials, and then the program cost. So, I'm going to go over these real quickly. Application selection, in their district, they actually had the principals and the board members, they would recommend candidates. And I was thinking it would be, if we decided to do this, it would be more of an open application, we'd advertise in the paper, much like the Citizens Academy from Murfreesboro does. Citizens Academy from Murfreesboro does. It'd be open. We'd have a selection committee. They could determine who's gonna be on. And it'd be like 25 people participating every year on this. And then they sent out an invitation letter to prospective candidates and then a phone call to follow up to see if they're actually interested. The program composition. So there's a welcome and a, this would actually be the outline of this program. So it would be, it would, it would carry out over from October to April. And they wouldn't have a meeting in December because of holidays. So the first month would be welcome, the role and responsibility board. Now include us and Dr. Gilbert. Continuous improvement and systems approach, that'd probably be Dr. Gilbert and maybe some central office staff. Educational operations against central office. School finance, that'd be Doc, you know, be Mr. Anderson over here. Tour of the district, they do that on a Saturday morning, like eight to 12. And they get on a bus and they go around the district to show them, you know, just the different things we have in the district. So people can see how big we are and where everything is. And then graduation, that would be all of us getting back together with the group and going over what they learned, or if they have any suggestions, or if they just have any ideas. And just, we can talk about that. And we give them a little plaque or something, a little certificate. And then, I already talked about this, but this, it would be six meetings, October through April. And the timeframe for each of these meetings, 6:45 to 9:00. And that's pretty much what the City Citizens Academy, which I went through last year, was the same, similar. And then logistics, and like dinner, you'd usually offer dinner. But when we had the Citizens Academy, they usually had it catered or somebody donated the food and it was no cost to the city. Materials, usually there's a handout relevant to each session. So you hand out different things. Supporting documents. So there'd be a district calendar, Leadership Academy calendar, what they had. District goals, board goals, board operating procedures, then onboarding documents. The program costs. They actually had a budget for this. And they budgeted $10,000, which I thought was very high. I was like, and I asked that. I said, "Why are you getting some of these things donated?" And they just said, "We just, we've always put money aside for it." And I said, "Okay." So. But they were, I guess, I don't know if they just never thought of getting things donated or what. But anyway, like the food, that would be an easy donation. But handouts, that's, you know, something we can do in-house copying. Again, the food, you can get that brought in. Transportation, that'd be for the field trip. You can have a bus for one day and a driver take everybody around. And then awards and gifts, which is usually a certificate or something you give at the end, just acknowledge that you finished and that you graduated from the program. And then they had this thing called Plan, Do, Study, and Act. I've never heard of that. I've heard it at a couple of these different presentations I went to. But they said establish a clear criteria for your selection of your participants, which that seems like pretty easy to do. You provide the participants opportunity to network, you know, to get together and talk about what they do and how they feel about the district. Engage participants in the learning process. And you don't want to overwhelm them. So you do want to present information, but you don't want to get bogged down into real heavy details. Just, you know, go for the top things. Then lessons learned from their experience. This is what their district has learned from doing this. They've been doing it for six years. So they've been doing it for a while. Offer opportunities for participants to engage in other areas in the district. And then they assist participants in recognizing their potential to lead and serve either in our city or somewhere else or within our schools. These are some of the successes of their academy. One person decided to make a career change after doing it. They became a math teacher. Someone increases the awareness among a larger pool about the potential for board service. Engaged ambassadors for the district, that's the main one, I feel. And then for them, send a message to the community that their district is intentional about preparing people to run for the board or just become volunteer for the service or just become involved in our schools or just to volunteer, help out. And then next year, and like I said, I feel very, I, that's something we can get going, I think, even this year, you know, by, you know, it's real, it seems like it'd be really easy to do, get it going. But I feel very passionate about it. But next year, the conference can be in Nashville. So there's no reason why everybody can't go. It's right up the road. So mark your calendars, March 21st to 23rd. So are there any questions that I could elaborate on? I'll, I'm happy to go back and talk more about some of these things. I just, I know I kind of went right through them, but.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, thank you for sharing everything. You know, many of these things I've heard before, but it's refreshing to hear it again and bring back old ideas.
Yeah.
And think of different ways, not exactly how maybe you were, they talked about applying some of these ideas, but different ways that we could put it into place. Of course, in my mind, a lot of this, we could, the foundation members could take advantage.
Yeah.
They would be, they're certainly are vested in the system. And they would most likely be interested in some of these opportunities. Which you may not know is that those foundation members often meet at the different schools. Now, one of the things in the academy is that, of course, I know that we have security, but I would assume that we would get everybody background checked. I wouldn't have them go on a Saturday. I have them go during the school days to actually see the children. Schools are just buildings.
That was another thing I was thinking, that a requirement for our academy would be, one, you'd have to go to school and get a tour from a principal, you know, arrange that. And then one would come to a board, actually come to one of our board meetings.
Right. I mean, like I say, schools are just buildings.
Yeah.
Without the kids.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be where I would put it. But I appreciate your giving us, if somebody's gonna go to a conference, I want to get the feedback from the conference.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Oh, you're welcome. And then another thing, too, it doesn't have to be a school. We could meet at central office and go to a school. You know, the logistics, that's for stuff to get ironed out. But, you know, I was excited about the ambassador program. That was one that really got me going. Any other questions or comments or Mary?
Thank you so much for making us aware. And I want to say something about Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Phillips when it comes to, when you talked about the ambassador program, you know, we've had board members involved in that. It's a wonderful program. It's a way for them to give, give back and kind of toot our own horn a little bit. So I know Mrs. Phillips has been involved in it for a long time, along with the leadership class. And also, Mr. Campbell attends the leadership class. So that's one avenue you have when you, you'll have to bring in strangers to talk about it. You have board members. And I'll encourage all other board members to please attend because they're very informative. And I know with the ambassador program, you get a little button. And it lets you know, I mean, it's all levels in TSBA to reach as an ambassador. So no better way could a board member serve than to do what you've done. And others, I know Mrs. Renee has attended a conference. So you've got a wealth of good stuff on the board. So be sure, if you plan to do it, use it. Use your resources. You've got some good resources. But thank you for the time you've given for going to the convention.
Please.
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to thank Mr. Barry, too. You know, I just feel like it's so exciting and empowering when you get to go and experience these new ideas and be able to bring them back to Murfreesboro City Schools. It just, I think it's very important for board members to continue their education, just like we have continued education for, or professional development for our teachers and other staff members. The, we have a policy for a community advisory council. And I think that could work very well hand in hand with this ambassador program for Murfreesboro City Schools. And like Ms. Smith, I think it would be great to have a way to set up, you know, different, maybe in the evening some, I mean, visit the schools during the day when classes are going on, but also have one night, because I'm sure we're not gonna do this ambassador academy very often throughout the year, maybe once, maybe. The, you know, where, like, for example, one room, they're doing a science experiment, another room, they're doing this. And where the people can go and see this hands-on, exciting, engaged, learning. That, I just love going to our schools and visiting because there's always something fun and interesting. You know, it's not dry books and old paper in our schools anymore. And our teachers do fabulous jobs. So thank you so much for bringing that back. And, you know, new ideas. You know, we have to be open to new ideas. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. And Dr. Gilbert, next on our list?
Yes, next on your agenda, you have the construction update, personnel, monthly revenue expenditure and attendance. Mr. Anderson?
The next item is the construction update. I've given you a list of all the different projects going on in the district. We're finishing up at Hobgood. We are also getting a price on adding some additional parking on the Jupiter Loop because we tend to run out of parking places over there during the school day. So we're getting a price on that. The overall creek project, last month, I reported to you that it was 30 days behind schedule. They now report that they've caught up about 15 of those days. Once they get fully under roof, you'll be able to see the project move along very rapidly. Following the two-page report are four aerial pictures of the site. And you can really see what's happened since last month. They're almost completely under roof now. So we're looking forward to that progressing right along. During the spring break, we had the fencing added at the pre-K locations where we'll be moving the pre-K program to, at Discovery School and Mitchell Nielsen Primary. The central office roof is about finished. They're on the final punch list and they're putting up the trim around the outside. And the main, what's called a cow wall, sky panels have had some issues and some leaking issues. And we're replacing that with a standing metal seam roof. And that should be done very shortly. In fact, I just saw an email today that the materials are now on site. So they'll be getting, starting to move along on that project. The foundation work at Discovery School, as you know, we had our low bidder and the documents have been sent out and the work will be done over the summer to get that project done. At Mitchell Nielsen Elementary and Primary, their exterior doors, we have got, we've gotten the stuff finished as far as getting the documents in. And we'll be purchasing the doors and installing them through our own in-house maintenance department to keep it lower than our budgeted amount that we put in the capital outlay. The playground rubber surface, we have a bid that's $50,000 less than our original estimate. And Kelly has some documents to go over so we can execute that and get moving on it. Because now is the time to start getting that product laid down and redo our rubber floors over there on the playgrounds.
Mr. Anderson, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that, that 50, that money that we had set aside, is that in this current budget?
The budget year we're in right now, yes, ma'am.
Does that mean that our fund balance will have an additional $50,000 in it?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On the maintenance department major projects, and these are not all capital outlay projects, but the Murfreesboro Electric Department is moving the transformer at Bellwood. And it's just to make a relocation. They were gonna do it over spring break. They ran into some conflicts on scheduling, so they're gonna do it over the summer instead. That project is their project. It's not really ours. But, you know, of course, it's on our campus. The Northfield thermal windows, 89 windows have been replaced. We have found a few more that we're going to move on and get those replaced as well. And as I pointed out to you at the last meeting, we are, every one of the schools built in that era, they're all starting to break down on those thermal windows. So we'll be, and that was in your capital outlay budget for next year. Irma Siegel had a HVAC control panel go down. We have replaced it. And we're doing the final adjustments on tweaking that to make sure it works efficiently. Because of the work that we're doing at Discovery School, we had to remove one tree that was directly in the way of the piers. That'll be installed. We haven't done anything else with any other trees. And right now, we're not planning on doing anything else. But we had to remove that one tree to get ready for that installation. Bellwood parking lot, with the change from a pre-K program that has every parent park and come into school, to now a drop-off and pickup and car lines, we have to reconfigure the parking lot to handle the ingress and egress. We have gone through our architect. We've gone through city planning. We have an approved plan. So when school is out this year, we're going to re-stripe that parking lot out in front of Bellwood. And we really have to do that because there's, people don't park in a parking lot and go in now. And now we're more worried about how the cars flow through the parking lot. So we have a totally revised plan that's been approved. And we're just, as soon as school is out, we'll be starting to move on getting that done. We also have new whiteboards at MNE. The boards are in and they'll be installed before May 14th. We painted the halls and door frames. I have a spring break at Bellwood. We changed the color of those. And it's been a while since we painted that. And then Hobgood roof replacement, this is one with, the oldest section of Hobgood roof is starting to deteriorate. And we need to replace it. We have the architect looking at it. We can get a piggyback price. And we, we'll be coming back with more information on that. But I just want to let you know, that's a project that's gonna have to go on because, and it's not the sections we're in. This is a part of the old section of the roof that is starting to leak. And as you know, those things are continually breaking down on us over the years.
Ms. Renee?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not, but because you went over the construction update, you know, some of us were not able to go to the first visit at overall. And there was supposed to be another visit scheduled. Do we have an idea when that might be?
Miss Trail was handling the visit time. I believe we can get another one scheduled. At least we'll get with you then and get a time to go. It'd be good to see now what's going on inside. You can really start to see the school take shape. Immediately after the report, you can see the four aerial pictures from all different angles. And you can see the roof. And you can see, because of the pictures, you can see the community around the school. I think it's, it's good for you to see what is coming up around it. And you can see where the new road is coming in off Moreland and then the newer section that's gonna go back up to Veterans Parkway. Any questions on the construction? Okay, the, the financial report is there. We have, we're to the good, $4,800,000. At this time of year is when we build our cash balances to run us through the summertime. We're at the 75% part of the school year. As you know, we have numbers that look really out of whack, like one item is 1,512%. And the reason for that is because the money coming back from the city on the revenue side to pay for the, to pay for all the computers that we bought. And so they are reimbursing us back on that. And they are very, very good about reimbursing us right away. They're, the next, we, you have in your report now the next expenditure, but we haven't even sent it to the city yet to get reimbursement. It's that quick of a turnaround. So that'll, that'll be good. But financially, we seem to be okay. And that computer stuff really skews the whole, the whole look of the report because it's got $5 million in it that was not projected to be in the report. Does anyone have any questions on this one?
I have a couple of questions. Getting back to that $50,000, you know, we're all going through budget right now. So is that $50,000 that we're saving over that estimate, is it in the current fund balance that's in the budget?
I'm not sure of the timing on that. I don't think it is. Because when I gave you that document, it was over a month ago.
Uh huh.
And this is the most, this is the newest data. So I'm not sure it is yet.
That's good news, isn't it?
It can be very good news.
My next question is, how do we get these aerial shots?
How do we, I mean?
Can we pay someone to fly and?
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. It's contract, is part of the contract for the construction.
Is it?
Is to come and get those once a month. And I had them change the schedule so they take them a week before your report.
Good idea.
Mr. Anderson shot him himself.
I didn't know whether to be smart and say something like that, but.
We can arrange that without an airplane. Just saying.
A perfect paratrooper would have no problem.
That's right. We can do that.
Hey, my son's a pilot now. Trust him.
Okay, the next report then is on the enrollment. We're 28 students above last year at this time. Our pupil teacher ratio average is 19.42 to 1. And our attendance is the highest it's ever been at 97%.
Ooh, yay.
Which is just amazing. If you look across the bottom, you can see that in our grade level configurations, kindergarten has more students than first grade, first grade has more students than second grade, second grade has more than third, third is more than fourth, et cetera, which shows a growing district when you're trending that way. So those are good numbers to see.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson on our attendance report?
Hearing none. We're down to other business. Don't forget the meeting on April the 28th. So be sure and mark your calendars.
At three.
At three o'clock. Yes, sir. Three o'clock. At the central, yes.
Question mark.
Until, until. Ms. Smith?
I just had a comment. I should have said it earlier, but the FMA live was really, really exciting. I think we had the sixth graders from across the district came in. And I think Chick Nitter applied for a grant that paid for our children to get to go to that program at Patterson Park. But I keep hearing over and over again, and with my own experience as part of this as well, the sixth grade, the kids across the district, I mean, you know, it would be easy to kind of slack, we're coasting out. I mean, you know, it would be easy to kind of slack, you're, we're coasting out of the school system, we're in sixth grade, we've just got a few more weeks. But I am not hearing that, and I applaud the teachers. The kid, the sixth graders are excited to go to school every day, and I really appreciate all of the teachers, and we have fantastic sixth grade teachers across the system, and I appreciate that. So just talk to a sixth grader, and I think you'll hear about their fun, their fun days where they're still learning in their last few days in the system.
Okay.
That is an excellent, oh, Ms.
Go ahead.
That's an excellent point, Ms. Smith, because that's, you know, we do a lot of special things with our sixth grade that gives them opportunities and enrichments that they might not otherwise have. And as far as that program, Murph got to take part, and they filmed Murph, you know, doing some of those science experiments. And that was an outstanding production, really high-quality production. So I'm so glad our kids got to participate.
Before I call on Mr. Washington and then Mrs. Renee, I want to say thank you to you, Mr. Washington. You know, we've leaned on you a lot, and you've been an excellent liaison to this board. You've always brought us pertinent information. You've always kept us informed, and you've been our go-to person when we had questions to bring back to the council, and we appreciate, I appreciate, everything you've done to make my tenure here enjoyable. Although you, sometimes you get me tickled, that's all right. That's all right. But I want you to know how much I appreciate you. Mr. Washington and then Mrs. Renee.
Okay, this is for Chairman Wade. You know, I think that when I first, well, we both came on, I came on the council in '98, she came on board in '98. I think her perception of her role was a whole lot different then than it is today. And I know that because we had very many conversations. The most successful leaders are great listeners. They lead by example, and I follow the three Cs. That's they're committed, they have compassion, and most of all, they have courage. So Goldie, just because she's retired, retiring, I'm still going to bounce things off of Ms. Wade. So I'm not going to let her off the hook about that, but she knows how I feel about her, and you too, and your whole family. So I wish you speed and.
Thank you.
You know, and relaxation in your retirement. You've served extremely well. You led by example. I can't say enough about you.
Thank you.
So appreciate you, and you have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Now, Mrs. Renee?
It's my turn, yay. You know, I get a little weepy with these things, so I'm going to try and go fast. Mrs. Wade and I have been associated through the schools for many, many years. She and Dennis were good friends, so we've known her a very long time. You mentioned your three Cs. Character is the one that comes to mind when I think of Mary Wade, the greatest character. She has everyone's hearts and best interest in her heart, and I think that says a lot about her character. Mary served on the board, how many years before you became our chair? Long time, right? When did you become chair? 2009? Well, you know, as a classroom teacher, and, you know, on the other end of this podium and whatever, I always admired you and what you did for our school system. But I have to say, I really think you came into your own when you became our board chair. You have been such a role model to every one of us, every one of the board members before us, every one of the board members in the past. I can't say enough wonderful things and sing your praises. You will be sorely missed. Please don't stay a stranger. Come back and be with us. And, you know, if you want to hang around, we could split a position or something, you know. But I love you and we'll miss you terribly.
I appreciate that. It's not a goodbye. It's always a, I'll see you later.
See you later.
See you later, because I expect to see all of you later, doing something together. We'll be doing something together. So if there's no other business.
There's one reminder. You do have one more meeting on the 28th.
I remember that. I reminded everybody that. So the thing is, if I don't show up for the meeting, I plan to show up. I know that meeting will go on.
Can the next meeting not be seven hours?
See, you're letting it out the bag. Nobody sees that.
My wife would appreciate it.
I appreciate everything that Murfreesboro City has done for me. I want to thank Mrs. Trail for her part that she played today. I've had a lot of fun, and when it stops being fun, it's when you need to give up a job, when it's no longer fun. That's not the reason I came out of it.
Amen.
I was having too much fun. I want to do some things inside the schools, volunteer. So I'll be still around. You can always call me. We can always talk, and I'll still send Dr. Gilbert messages of just my thoughts. Just my thoughts. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Wait, 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 wait. I think you need to bang, bang, bang that gavel as hard as you possibly can, since it's going to be the.
Last time I banged it, I will hit it a little harder than usual. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All righty. We are adjourned. There you go.